And you know Silco opened in downtown 25, have you seen them? The cabinet store?
On the corner there.
So he's got fixtures like pot rods and all kinds of, you know, scutches and really cool things that.
Time to get started. Work on the theory. The sooner we get started, the sooner we leave. I'll start with a roll call from the far end.
James Lowry.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I'm the chair. We have in front of us a call to order, approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes for July 1st, 2025. There's space for public comment. Then we have a public hearing for Stone Ridge Farms' conditional use mineral extraction. After the public hearing, we have pending business, which again, Stone Ridge Farms' conditional use mineral extraction. And then we have a little, some other business dealing with the zoning ordinances that we can discuss.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Zachary Shapiro to approve the agenda as written. Any comments? Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Cool. Approval of the minutes of July 1st.
So vote.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by James Lowry to approve the minutes of July 1st as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. It is now 7:03 and I will call the public hearing to order. Stone Ridge Farms' conditional use mineral extraction proposal to conduct mineral extraction operations in the gravel pit area located on Curtis Road, Tax Map 23 Lot 4. The parcel is 72 acres in size and is located in the R4 and Shoreland Zone. Stone Ridge Farms Incorporated, Saul Federer and Clifton Tem are the property owners. David Stone is the representative and Jason Vafiades, P.E. of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the applicant's engineer. Is there anybody from the public that has a question for the applicant?
Please, please come. That way it helps us record it so I can get the minutes right. Sit there or stand there, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, please.
It was, it's more about hours of operation, like do they, are there going to be hours of operation?
That's.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's pretty much gonna be seven, you know, normal hours, seven to five, seven to four, nothing.
Monday to Friday or?
Yeah, yeah, maybe Saturday, but where is, where is it gonna be any, uh, late night, late night ventures?
It can be a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
The vehicles back and forth for eight hours, like we have the Monday to Friday, the weekends I might not want here. That's just my opinion or how I view it. But that doesn't mean I don't want to stop doing it at all. Just I probably don't want to hear it on the weekends or maybe at least after the month.
Yeah, there should, there should be in there.
Good. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
There. Justin Richardson representing the Kennybunk, the Buckport Water District. We have interest in the property because we have a well, we call it the Kennybunk River Well, just over the border in Kennybunk. And part of the zone of infiltration for the well extends into the property. According to East Medite, we have them, use of the, our middle extraction pit is, is welcome. They just can't extend the pit more than 50% of the size. But I do have a letter, I spoke to Jason and there's a letter from Rising's Engineering stating that there's gonna be four monitoring, the groundwater monitoring wells, is that still gonna happen?
These are, they're already on property. There's actually, there's monitoring wells that were already there. And then KKW put in monitoring wells too. So there's, there's probably, I'm pretty sure there's like six to seven. Some of them, actually I haven't gone, I didn't walk down close to the river because I think there's actually more down there. But I haven't talked to, because I know a bunch of guys over the, I haven't talked and see if it's actually more. You know.
There's quite a few down there, but this letter from, who was it from?
Jason?
No, John Torosoka from Horizons.
Oh.
Rising's Engineering stated that there's gonna be four on site that they're gonna put in piezometers. And I didn't know if that was part of the DEP requirement and then are you sending water level data to the?
I send, I send a sample every fall, EP, for controlling.
Right, VOCs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's all that they require is.
Yep.
I believe the, I believe the monitoring wells, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you were, you were putting four new ones down, down in the pit?
No, I mean, they're already scattered around the perimeter.
Oh, okay.
I don't need to put any inside, it's all I'm getting.
Not a problem. I just thought you had said you were gonna put it, I know you had said there's gonna, there's four monitoring wells around the pit someplace.
Yeah, actually, I've got the father, the mother.
Yeah, we just want to make sure there's still gonna be monitoring of the levels.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in terms of the size of the pit, so that was something you just brought up that you don't want it to grow any larger?
Said the existing plan for pit expansion is not changing, is that correct?
Yeah.
Same, same plan.
It's the same as it's always been.
Yeah, you're just redoing the permit with EP.
Yeah, the original, all the town, town, yeah, original size.
So my question is, should we codify that or should we find out more and make sure that, you know, if.
Oh, it should be here on the plans.
Okay, you're right. I'm sorry.
Yes.
We're gonna have. I'll ask my question when it's appropriate. Okay, so you go ahead and finish.
Okay.
So just let me make sure I get this right. So your concerns are the well monitoring and that the size of the pit isn't gonna get much bigger? Is that what?
Correct.
Did I summarize that right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm, if there's no else from the public, we'll end the discussion, the public hearing, and then we can continue on.
Right.
The hearing is over. It's 7:09.
So should we codify that the pit should not grow beyond a certain point, given the concerns of the Kennybunk? What are this?
Is that on the plan? It's all right. Were the easement referenced on the plan? I don't see any notes on that. There might be some stuff up in there. The drawing itself, right? Doesn't it outline the size of the pit?
Yes, but the point is that it shouldn't get any bigger.
Yeah, but if it.
It can get any bigger.
It can if it's, that's what's on there. It can't be bigger than that. That's what's on there. You can't go bigger than that. And if it hasn't changed.
The existing current plan has to change from the.
That's what I'm saying. So it, it can't get bigger because it can't go outside what the plan is.
All I know is Sprecher thinks it happened and sometimes it's better to have it in writing than it is to.
Well, we can make that a condition.
That the, if that the plan, you know, the pit isn't gonna get any bigger.
Right. This, this is the set of plans that we have and this is the bit right here. Right. So it won't, it can't get any bigger than that unless they come back to us and ask us to, to grant them.
Right. Or you're on somebody else's plan, whatever. And, and my concern with doing that is if something were to change in their agreement with the water district.
They'd be limited.
They don't have to come back to us anyway to expand.
Right.
And if it was a condition of approval, then they could be limited based, you know, somebody could argue a point that they couldn't because we didn't approve it like that or set that condition beforehand.
Well. I, I still think some language should be included, even if it doesn't restrict them. The language isn't restrictive. I think it should, we should note that we understand that the pit shouldn't grow and that it can maintain its size or decrease in size, but not increase.
Right.
So. I think we should.
I'm not sure how, what the language would look like. Doing that.
Then they can expand beyond what is depicted on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but it can.
And that's, that's already a given.
But we can make that a condition of approval.
Yeah.
So did you have something further you wanted to add?
I have something.
Okay.
One of the conditions we have in, for the approval is states that the project will maintain 100 feet setbacks off the Curtis Road, off the Kennybrook Road and take place outside the shore land zone. So it pretty much limits them from where they can expand. Right?
Yes.
And does expansion include not only width but depth?
They can't dig below the water table.
Right. Well, they could, but they're gonna have to stock up on.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why those piezometers are there so they can measure the water.
Yep.
So.
Just asking.
Yeah. So if you look at it, you'll see the bottom is full of water, so you can't, yeah. Pretty high water till there.
It just makes a deeper swimming pool.
Yeah.
It'd be like that place up in Lewiston that has heavy equipment in the bottom of the, of the gravel pit under the water.
Oh, glory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think you got what you need, but if you want to add more.
No, I just figured it doesn't hurt to have it in the record that we're aware. They're aware.
Yep.
You're aware. Okay, I'm good.
Any other questions by the board? In that case, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion. We approve the application.
One second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Zachary Shapiro to approve the application. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
We agree through and approve each other.
Yeah, I'm, I'm about to.
And know that I'm attending.
I got you, buddy. Okay.
Arundel Planning Board Findings of Fact and Approval Motion, Stone Ridge Farms Gravel Pit, July 15th, 2025. Whereas on February 10th, 2025, the planning board received the application for Stone Ridge Farms gravel pit, gravel pit from Stone Ridge Farms LLC identified on Tax Map 23 Lot 4. Whereas on April 8th, the planning board conducted a sitewalk. Whereas on July 1st, the planning board deemed the application complete. Whereas on July 15th, the planning board scheduled a public hearing whereupon the Arundel Planning Board has reviewed and given due consideration of the applicant's amended application and has arrived at the following findings. Findings of fact, number one. The owner is Stone Ridge Farms, Clifton Tem and Saul Federer with right title and interest of Tax Map 23 Lot 4, and the applicant is David Stone. The applicant proposes to re-permit an existing gravel borrow pit located at the intersection of Curtis Road and Irving Road, Tax Map 23 Lot 4, and the Rural Conservation R4 and Resource Protection RP districts. The applicant states that the gravel extraction operation will comply with all mineral and erosion control practices and the gravel pit will be internally drained. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with the performance standards of Section 5 Site Plan Review in Sections 9.3.1.8. The applicant has submitted plan sets, engineered drawings and erosion control details prepared by Jason Vafiades, P.E. Atlantic Resource Consultants and dated February 10th, 2025. Conformance with Section 5 Performance Standards. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the site plan application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 5 of the Arundel Site Plan Review requirements as follows. 5.2 Driveway Design Standards, the applicant proposes to construct a 100-foot-long paved access road to the gravel pit off Curtis Road. The Public Works Director requests that 20 feet of paved surface be added to the road to comply with the ordinance. The applicant has provided cost estimates for the road in the updated submission. 5.3 No Emission of Dust, Smoke or Other Particles Will Result From the Development. 5.4 Erosion Control. The applicant intends to comply with the Erosion and Sedimentation Control Best Management Practices outlined in DEP. The property will maintain a three-to-one slope in post-borrow condition and a minimum four inches of seeded loam in rehabilitation areas. The applicant states that all erosion control measures will be monitored periodically to impact, to minimize impacts.
I think we have to vote on each individual section. In case it doesn't pass, that way they know what wasn't.
Oh, okay.
But I'm wondering if these findings of fact, they've set these up with performance standards and if we shouldn't instead have the conditional use standard.
We should have the conditional use standards.
That's what I was getting ready to start to look into.
It's, yeah, we should have the conditional use standards because that's what we normally vote on.
Right, it's only eight or nine or 10 standards, not 25.
Given I don't have my ordinance with me. I can. So we can, we can either, either work through the ordinance and take each one of these individually. This the new one, Paul?
Sir, yes, sir.
Oh.
I still have a note to my old one. I don't want to give it up.
Don't, don't call me sir. I work for a living.
I'll update this one.
All I have to do is find condition uses. 13. Help me. Was it, was it 10? Where are the conditional uses?
Yeah.
You just want to make sure we did the right one for you guys. That's all. Page 177, Rich.
Thank you.
10.6.4.
Yep, okay, good enough. Thank you. Okay, so we'll, we'll just in, insert these after the findings of fact in terms of who. And we will strike all the rest of them.
Well, there's 10 of them, right? So she's got.
All site plan conditional use review applications shall be evaluated and approved, approved with conditions or denied based on the following findings of fact. Number one. The proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in Sections 5, 9 and 10 of this ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Zach Shapiro, seconded by Jamie?
Yep.
For condition number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits.
Second.
Motion by Marty, seconded by Zach to approve number two. Any discussion?
A quick question for the applicant. Could you remind us of, if you've had to go to DEP for this? Have you done that?
The only thing, I've been in contact with Eric, it's just the, a lot of testing stuff. Everything else is. Everything's.
The prior permit holds? Okay. Okay.
Any more, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Zach, reseconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number four, the proposed project will not grant, will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources.
Move to approve.
Second, excuse me. See that comes.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Zachary. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a 25-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties.
Second.
Who made the motion? Marty? Motion by Marty, seconded by Zachary to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. Motion by Marty, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources or visual quality of the neighborhoods surrounding environs or the community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Zachary, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number eight. The proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels.
Move to approve.
Motion by Zachary, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Zachary, seconded by Jamie, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. That, number 10, that the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood.
I'll second that.
Motion by Marty, seconded by Susan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Therefore, do you have a resolve?
The conditions that are listed in here though still apply.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So to Susan's point, should we add a condition that just emphasizes that any expansion of the proposed gravel pit, both in the limits of, of the site area limits and the depth would require planning board approval?
We can, but I think we need to take a look at our Section 8.8 of 11, Conformance with Mineral, Mineral Exploration and Extraction, which it just says that they meet the requirements. And they will, it's, after due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the site, the, the site plan application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 8 of the Arundel Site Plan Review Requirements as follows. The development shall conform to the standards of Section 9. The applicant should ensure that all mineral extraction operations include drainage and runoff will take place 100 feet outside the normal high water mark of Brimstone Pond or the Kennybunk River. C, the applicant has provided erosion control details, demonstrating compliance with the ordinance. I believe he's done that. And then Section 938, Earth Moving and Mineral Extraction Operations has absolutely nothing with it.
No, it's in the last page.
After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the site plan application to be in conformance with the criteria of Section 9 of the Arundel Site Plan Review Requirements as follows. A, the applicant states that the project will maintain all 100 feet setbacks off Curtis Road and from the Kennybunk River. The applicant states that all gravel extraction will take place outside of the shore land zone. B, the proposed project will maintain all three-to-one slopes in post-borrow condition as shown in the erosion control details. Number four, number, letter C. The project will require a minimum of four inches of seeded loam in all rehabilitation areas per the ordinance as noted in the erosion control details. Letter D, access to the gravel extraction will be provided by the 100-foot-long paved access road. Letter E, the applicant states that the project will not require spill prevention measures and does not include refueling areas. Letter F, site revegetation and erosion control will be inspected and maintained as outlined in the control, erosion control details. Therefore, be it resolved based on the above findings and conclusions of the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the site plan conditional use application of Stone Ridge Farms gravel pit at the location of Tax Map 23 Lot 4 in the Rural Conservation and Resource Protection Zoning Districts. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board, July 15th, 2025. We didn't motion to accept that.
Well, so I have one question before we do. And Jamie asked the question and I would like it to be in there someplace, maybe as G, even though
Okay.
it's state, overstates the obvious that the pit is not to expand beyond its current size, both in width or depth.
Okay. Make it.
I.
No, make, I know, you can't use those words.
You can't what?
It can't, it has to exceed the current size. That's why they're digging it.
The proposed.
The proposed size.
Plan.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I just.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I meant the proposed size, the size that's on the plan.
Right. Did you get that, Paul?
I got it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get something to do. Okay.
Yeah. Would you, would you read it back? It'll be letter G.
Finish, when I finish writing. Had to listen to this.
He's my editor. Yeah, what I meant was that what they're proposing to do, that it shouldn't expand beyond that.
And since we haven't started to vote, we don't have a problem.
Let me, let me throw this out and see if this makes sense. The excavation pit will not expand beyond the proposed site plan provided, or approved site plan provided. The excavation pit will not expand beyond the proposed site plan provided, or approved site plan provided. How's that?
Correct.
Great.
Okay, any other questions?
Move to approve with the amendment.
Okay.
Thanks.
Motion by Zachary, seconded by, was that you, Jamie?
It was.
Seconded by-
Question. Often or does it happen? The, uh, is it a yearly inspection or is it a, uh?
It's, it's every three years. He has to come back for approval.
Are you not calling the department now or?
That, that aspect of it, I have no idea. All I know to be sure is that it's a three-year renewal.
It would fall under the code enforcement.
It would, yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to be going around checking things like that, so.
But how, how often he does surprise visits? I don't know.
Oh.
He hasn't been to my house. That'd be a big surprise. Okay. Any other discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll, that's, that's again, we'll have, we'll have copies of the note, the findings of fact for you uh, later this week in, in, uh, in Ann's office.
So will I get like some type of following command of what he-
Yes, yeah.
Is that what it was?
Well. Need to, we all need to sign these plans.
And is there a surety or anything?
I, I believe you've already posted the surety, haven't you?
Was, uh?
You posted, you posted some money with, with Sam?
I believe so.
Yeah, because it was, it was like six thousand dollars, I think.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, I remember seeing, I just don't remember how much it was. But, okay.
It's all the hell.
So I couldn't help but think about Pam Bianvi when she said she had the file on her desk, but it wasn't necessarily the absence. So. I cut the file off my desk. I knew it was the proposed size.
I'm with it.
What file?
I just wanted to make sure. I can't put those words in here.
She didn't, she didn't have the list. But she has the Kennedy file and a couple of those files.
Yeah.
But not, she did-
Area sixty-four.
Yeah, she hasn't opened the list yet. Because there is no list.
So we're-
There's a file on it.
Yeah, so thank you.
Oh, I just, I'm not-
No, you're correct. I mean, I-
I react sometimes.
I wasn't clear.
Sorry.
Listen, I don't have any ego when it comes to this stuff.
I'm gonna make sure.
I just know sometimes it's better to say it than not to say.
I'm buying that. Yeah, I'm freaking, I'm freaking, no.
As long as it's not ridiculous.
There's two copies and we can wait, yeah, all day.
So you want us to sign it now?
Yes.
Yep. You don't make him wait?
Yeah, you and I.
Sign down, the other stuff.
What were you listening to? Yeah.
Thank you, Kenster.
Yeah, it is little one.
Okay, yeah, they're just the one painting.
Sounds bigger than that, Paul. Yeah, actually, it'd be-
For the what?
We, we thought that the news fire order.
Yeah.
That we would have to get into. There's only stuff, the ordinance.
So we need to decide where it goes?
Pretty much, because it's gonna, it's gonna affect a couple of the items that are in there, except for what gets in the order.
So you're doing two first?
Yeah.
Do we have a copy of Wilson's the fleet?
Sell on there if it's my work being on first.
All right, so.
No, I, I don't, I wasn't-
Thought it was already put into the subject.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you know what?
Well, yeah, I think eight years ago.
Yeah.
It's been
Yes.
Put into the area.
Well, I didn't get it.
No, that's the one I sent you on a business park thing, the first one.
It's five, seven. Look, we've got your new ordinance.
Oh, I didn't bring mine with me.
Mine's over there. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, appreciate it. My guys do it.
Bye.
That's all he can, he can, yeah. He's leaving the man. I'll let him use it. I just gotta take notes.
And who was here on May, on May sixth, when we went through Clearview Estates and, and voted to send them up the food chain?
I was.
I did.
Paul and Marty, okay. I need, I need you and Marty to sign that. That's the, that's going into the file noting that, that it died at town meeting, so it's a moot point. Even though, even though it got approved by both us and the select man, town meeting shot it down. Yeah, so there'll be a record of it.
Yeah, was on, really.
Yeah, but isn't there anything new committed to this document again?
It, it's my understanding that uh, Mr. Thomas showed up at the select meet, select board meeting last night with a new set of plans and the select board said, have a nice day. We're not looking at it.
Huh.
It has to come through us before it can go to him. And I think that that's essentially what the select board said.
The select board probably should just address all the boo-boos in Clearview Estates and fix them all.
Hmm.
And not and it should be done by the select board of town and not any individual.
Okay.
That's my thought.
So there.
There you go.
That takes care of all of the business that we had to deal with.
I wasn't here.
Somebody make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
What are you doing?
Yeah, one and two. No, that was where, uh, were you there, Marty? What did we do?